Let's call the meeting order. Get the pledge.
You want a different chair?
No, that should be fine.
Please.
We'll call him. Michelle.
Here.
Julie. She's excused. An excused absence. Judy.
Here.
Troy.
Here.
Janet.
Here.
BJ.
Yes, sir.
And Dennis isn't here. Sounds good. Okay. I want to move my mayor's comments up. What I need to say is anytime anybody wants to get on the agenda, you've got to let us know a week in advance. Everything goes through Michelle. If it doesn't go through Michelle, it doesn't get on the agenda. And when you call her, we need to know what the subject is you're talking about and give her your name so we can get you on the agenda and we know what's going on. And that works for everything. Anybody needs something from the town, you go through the clerk. Water bills, anything, any and everything. It will not be accepted if it doesn't go through. Okay, moving on. Meeting minutes from... Let's change this. Approval of agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. It would be in regards to First Street. I think we need to look at something to get that taken care of. The street's a mess.
Okay, let's put that... Let's put that at the head of new business. We'll make it. Make it A, A8.
Can you include it in front of the town hall with that?
Yeah, we could.
Because it's not written there either.
Okay. Is there anything else on the agenda that we can change? Oh, we need to add Farley for the Fourth of July fireworks permit. We'll make him B under new business. And we needed Kravis Stoney under Snakeback E as new business. Is there any more changes? Do I have motion to to approve the agenda as amended?
I made that one, too.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Meeting minutes from May 13.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes from May 13.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes if there are seconds?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Pay bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
We have less than one minute.
Right down the wall, sit up right here.
Ed, I want you to pay bills. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Clerk Prenger, Michelle.
Okay, so the bank account balances as of this morning are as follows. The police account has $119,959.82. The general account has $5,946.61. The enterprise has $32,721.21. The community fund has $67,162.60. And the municipal court account has $22,828.40.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Court, Janet.
Okay, just a second. All right. So you guys all have a firm report there? So payments received during May, $9,696. And we have a list of all of the all the citations that paid as page two. And then the backup of that, which is an attachment to that, to that, the collections report, and it's the bank statement. So, and the judge will sign that report that on next Friday we'll have court after she resumes it. You can see how many citations were written so far in 2024. For June, I think we had 17 yesterday. I don't know, it looked like maybe about 20 or so today. So there's quite a lot. And just so you guys know, so last year, what we decided to do because we had an issue where people paid at the stop. And that's technically a bond. And so we have been, instead of processing that as a forfeiture, which is what I had been taught to do, we switched that. And so those are, those funds are actually held. The credit card payments get deposited to the court account. But I hold those out. In other words, they're classified as a liability because they could, we could have to refund them. And checks and cash I hold out in my safe. And so I don't deposit those until the court date of the person who paid that bond. And I run all that by the auditors and they approve that, that money. So anyway, I just wanted you guys to know. So that's, so those payment, those are not reflected in the funds receipt. So is that, court is Friday, June 21st, next Friday. There's no bench trials, but there are a lot of columns. Things are starting to start up. We got the bank account open and I started separate accounting as of, well, actually, the accounting as of May 1st, there were a couple of deposits made before May 17. I'm accounting for all of those. I submitted a grant to the Wyoming Department of Homeland Security for communication equipment for the police department. And I also submitted documentation last month for the whiteout behavioral enforcement grants. Also, because I'm doing handling right now, so I have to do the public officer training and pass that test. So I've been doing that and I'll take that test next week.
Question. Can we take credit cards? Do we charge a 3% fee?
The processing company charges the fee. We get, so for example, on a $140 ticket, the fee is $4.90. We get
reimbursed.
We get $140.
Yeah.
The $4.90 goes to the credit card company.
Right, okay.
Can I grab our companies free for us as well?
Yeah. Okay. Can I get you guys to sit down? We'd like everybody sitting so we don't have any distractions. Maintenance, water, sewer and street analysis.
Basically, we're getting everything up and running. Been giving us bits. We're backing that quite often, but we're going to start putting more practice in it. Brandy's got most of the streets sprayed for weeds. And that's it. We're just been busy getting things done and getting the water going and getting everything greened up. So we're just staying busy with what we're doing, guys.
I'd like to say the parks are looking really nice.
Thank you.
Troy, water.
Well, after the last meeting, the water board just went over their budget. There was some drama, but they haven't gone forward with any decisions on rate increase for the town. Anderson, at this time.
Now, does that rate increase is just from Anderson or not?
Yes, sir.
They're talking every day. And that's it?
That's it for that.
BJ.
Not a lot for me today. That's one thing, Janet, for all the hard work on the scratch she's doing. So it's a lot of hard work up here for a lot of stuff. So I just appreciate her because we get those grants, it'll be a huge plus for us. And then just be where our traffic's picking up. So your cross is clear, you're pulling out, just be careful. So you, you turn and T-bone yourselves, so just watch, be careful.
Thank you, BJ.
Is that on the record or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, on old business, we've got water, rate increase. We've got 24, 25 budget. That will be moved to a special meeting because we do not have Julie here and she's one of the growth of the budget. So we need to ask her questions on it. So we'll try to get together and wrap when everybody can make a special meeting and get the last reading and on the budget.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, that'd have to be second meeting.
Pardon?
That'd have to be second meeting.
We've had, she's not here. We've had two readings.
This past reading actually violated the requirement of the law.
And how was that?
Because you didn't have an agenda posted. It was actually taken and the meetings were listed. And that's required by law, by the state law. So we have to do this.
I, if I remember, I thought it was posted.
I have posted, I didn't know it was posted.
It was on the special meeting, there was, on the agenda was for the water, or not for the water, but for the budget. Do we, do we have Judy's? Yep.
We're going to pull the phone up. Look in the office for a bit of everything. This is just, I guess. Every month, what is it?
Yeah, I think. Here's what we're going to do. Seeing that's been brought up, we've got 24, 25 budget on the agenda. Do I have a motion to pass the budget for the second reading? None. It's on the agenda, let's pass it now. Then we just got to have one special meeting.
Aye.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Second reading of budget passes. We don't need it now. We might, we might round, but.
Was there an agenda there?
Yeah, there was an agenda and the meeting.
The agenda was the budget, 2024, 25 budget, and to renew BCBS insurance for police department.
And this wasn't provided to the public, correct?
It was provided in the different places. Okay, how many minutes?
And I have the signed one.
She does, yeah. Okay, again, provided to the public. You can come in and get it if you wonder. You can read it in the box.
Special meeting, please, excuse me. Does it recommend?
Oh, that's right. Mayor mentioned, none was provided to the newspaper, just for future reference. And that has to be. Well, I'm just letting you know. I, it's the new stuff, but just in the future, the paper's supposed to happen within eight hours.
Can I ask you, Barb, why wasn't our last meeting in April in the paper?
Because I wasn't here.
Right.
And I ran out of time to do that. I can go back and watch the YouTube video if you would like.
Because I figured that's probably what you would do was watch Thea's.
I did that and that was part of the plan. However, too many other things came up that were.
I just wondered.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay. Because I was looking for it.
I'm sure you were.
Okay, it's been approved twice. We're down to the park on the scene. We were talking about doing some work at the park to make it nice enough to use. I'll let Tim go ahead and let you know what.
Basically, I went through all the costs on everything that we was gonna, we were thinking about doing with the park. And the way.
Was it just Mark, the public?
The public, or just? And the way that, the way that we can beautify it, make it a lot better than what it is right now, is if we run a two-inch line down the center of that, then we come up with quick couplers. There'd be about six of those put in that line. That's 300 feet in that, in that park. So it would require that. And it would require, there's these green sprinklers set on tripods and they're big iron sprinklers. They shoot out there a long ways. So if we get four of those, we could go across that park and water it in about four settings. All the pipe, all the couplers, all the grass seed, the sprinklers, everything else that we're looking at would run between $8,000 and $10,000. Now that would, and again, this is not going to be a quick fix for the simple reason that if anybody's planting grass, I mean, it's usually the second year when you're going to get your best deal out of it. So part of the park, if we decided to do this, would have to be fenced off during that growth period to keep the kids off of it, and of course, and the adults. But right now, what we're doing over there is we're spending a lot of money watering that park. And a lot of money, what I mean is in time. Because we're pulling anywhere from 150 to 180 foot of hose all the time. And you're having to go across that park with those hoses about six times. So it's creating a lot of expenditures as far as money goes. The next question I know we're going to get asked is where would that money come from? I seen tonight that we had $67,000 in change in the community, community fund. And basically, that's what the community fund set up for us to do things to better our community. So yeah, I'll bring that to the council's attention. I'll even bring it to the public's attention, see what the public thinks about that idea. You know, our park is, is, is what speaks of our town. You know, if people stop at our park and you get nothing but weeds and, and things like that, then it don't speak very well of us. So Janet, you had a question?
Oh, I was just going to say, you know, you might consider planting some grass that will stand up to people walking on it and kids playing on it. And it doesn't take, it grows slowly and doesn't take a lot of water. I planted some bone grass in my backyard. It takes a couple of years to get started. It also chokes out the weeds. And it grows really slowly and it's very, it's extremely drought resistant. So you don't have to water it like you have to water a conventional.
You should have bone grass.
Well, I mean, it's a pasture grass. I got it from Ross. And so I'm sure if you call Lisa when we receive, she could sell you some.
It's a pasture grass. It's not a yard grass.
But it stands, it stands up to people walking on it. Unlike bluegrass, which, you know, you get paths and itches and grooves and things like that. Especially if you have a lot of kids in there.
Absolutely.
And so I got it because I had dog, big dogs at the time.
Right.
And it worked really, it works really well.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Chris?
So you're talking about road irrigation line essentially?
Yeah, right down the middle.
You've already been tying that irrigation up there because I don't know exactly where the lines are. I don't think there's any irrigation lines going down that road, is there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's what, that's what feeds.
Oh, that's on the park.
Yeah. Yeah, so we've already got, we've already got a riser in the park because we use that water to irrigate our park right now.
The one down there was?
The one, the public park.
So it's already got the irrigation?
Absolutely.
You just got the line down the middle of the risers?
Yep, we're 300 feet on that. We're 140 feet across on that park. What it is basically on. A little bit of head on there.
I forgot about the, because I noticed that we had lines, I think, tied into the old school lines.
Yeah, we run it, we run it across there.
Oh, you did run a new one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was old information. I forgot, I forgot the one, I forgot about those down there.
Well, I can't remember which movie I watched last night. Any other comments?
Comments, council, the management.
I think we should do something because I went over and watched him and you were over there that room, we were watching him and he was having a struggle to get that whole thing watered with sprinklers. And it just doesn't work if you want to keep that yard watered. And then with the heat, it's going to get worse. And I agree, we need some kind of a sprinkler. Those ones where you can move like you're talking about and they shoot out a long ways. And I agree that you should, we should do that.
Troy, any comments?
No, I totally agree. I mean, we've already discussed previously that we want to keep this, this park. So, you know, let's do what we can take to make it look nice and keep it up.
What I'll put with that is, seeing that we're talking about it, is, you know, we've, we've heard a lot of stuff about community support, community help. When we go to do this, we would like to put together some kind of a barbecue. And when we're done, of course, we're not going to eat before because people all want to go home. You know, we would like to see the community come together on this. Let's all, let's all make this park together as a community versus two or three of us doing everything on it. Travis?
Is this going to be done at no charge to the community? The supplies and all that?
No, it's going to cost between $8,000 and $10,000 to do this.
Okay, and who's the contractor?
Basically, all we got to do is put a trench in there and put the pipe in. So it's a real simple deal.
Yeah, but we did that there with the fire hydrants and that mess is still not cleaned up yet. So I would feel really uncomfortable about going about it that way.
Well, we can't, we can't afford to hire a contractor to do that when, when we've got two maintenance guys that are very capable of doing that, so.
Well, that park's been growing since what, 60s, 70s? If not before that, it'll last a little longer.
I beg to differ. I mean, we have to get new things in there to take care of that park because it has been there a long time and we've got to get new leaks to water it. We do have two maintenance guys that are doing a great job right now. Howard's doing great. They know what they're doing. And if you hire somebody to come in and do it, it's going to cost us a lot more. And these guys, they've taken care of the water break over here. I, I'm all with them.
Rod and I put a lot underground line in in our lifetime and we know what we're doing with it. Go ahead.
If you wouldn't mind if council agrees, I mean, I can do the spot water that's required down on the, on the south end to get it back to grass. So I mean, I'll furnish the hose and add everything else.
Yeah. Yeah, we just, you know, if we're going to make it look good, we're going to have the equipment to make it look good, Travis. I mean, that's the main question.
Time is craft.
Well, exactly. We've seen how, you know, we can, we can do these things and then all of a sudden, nobody's there doing them and we're even more soft before it was, was started like that. So, you know, I just, I disagree with the fact that, that we can, you know, what happens when you're gone for a week or 10 days or, or three days and we're at 100 degree heat and we need water over there?
Another thing you suggested too, like when you was going to Rottelt over there and those type of things and you were going to get a list and we were going to have a signup sheet to see who all would like to come over and help and see if everybody does get together and do this. And, but we would like to have a signup sheet to show them who all is going to come and do help. rake and pick up rocks and all these kinds of things that we need help with. We're going to get this part going.
And that, that price, Troy and the council and mayor includes city park signs on two places.
That's another thing I want, big city park signs. Or to put on this end and on that end to turn down there because nobody, a lot of people don't even know that park exists back there.
No, man, you're right, you're right.
Maybe restroom signs as well, like city park.
Absolutely.
Good idea, BJ.
A lot of them use this one here.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the community? Go ahead.
Did you say at one time no dogs allowed?
Oh, that's another thing.
That no dogs signs. But maybe there should be a little, I don't know, a little run on the end with just gravel and fence that dogs could go in. Because when you get people coming through and they want to stop.
Can we appoint somebody to clean up that little dog tamper?
You could have a little baggie thing like everywhere else.
So get that out of the way. Highway doing that with the park along, because they, they don't get their little baggies. I do, yes.
I mean, I think that's a good idea. Because a lot of tourists travel with dogs.
But only the tourists stop in there. We're not going to have dogs stand in there that live here.
Well, right, right. And it wouldn't cost us that much to do a little chain link fence in there.
Baggage disposal and a garbage, garbage barrel above it. So they have a good idea.
And I think we could do that somewhere where we, where we got it like grass so we don't have to put gravel over grass, current grass.
Anyway. Otherwise, they're going to be doing their business on a leash, who knows where.
Put that area that it jumps in there way down the end.
Um, it's north end or south? That's, uh? That's south.
That's a...
The north's where we get the best grass.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, then, forget that.
Most people use the south end just because it's closer to restaurants and stuff.
Right. Right.
That's true.
Have you got the... The restroom is fixed?
Yeah, they're up and running. They've been up and running for about three weeks now. Got a leaky toilet in the women's room, I gotta get it fixed, but that's all. Everything else is good. So any more comment from the council? Mr. Mayor?
I'm good. Do we wanna set a... Well, first of all, would anybody donate time to come over now? Okay, so we just gotta know what it is. We'll set a time, and we'll post it, and we'll probably give everybody at least ten days' advance notice, and you have the date in mind?
I don't, because we've got it... We're still playing catch-up on the parks and entryways. I'd like to get this done as soon as possible, because the longer we wait, the hotter it gets, the more water it takes to get that grass up, so... But it would be nice if Michelle could get a sign-up sheet out here for all those that wanna volunteer, and that way, we'll know how many hamburgers or hot dogs or whatever we need to furnish for it. And if we can get a clear, then we can probably get her done in a day, guys. So, Michelle, can you get a sign-up sheet written on the public park for community service? And if she can put it out here on the bench?
Put it on Matt Anderson happening.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Can I ask Tim, what's going on down with the park or the dog? That's down in the parks, is that separate?
That's separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to go ahead and do what we discussed, the water lines, grass, and possibly a little doggy area? Do I have a motion to do that? The price is between anywhere from seventy-five to ten, and it could be a little bit less than that. I made a motion that we submit funds for review of the county park. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Jared Cook, no need for that.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to do First Street first?
Oh, yeah. First Street first. Gravel, blades, boxers.
Am I speaking?
Well, you put it on the agenda, so...
See, I thought I came from the blue. I imagine most of you guys have heard of First Street, and it's pretty rough. I think what I'd like to bring to the council tonight is go ahead and let's find out what road base is gonna cost, and let's find out what it's gonna cost to get it in here and then get a blade in here. But if it stays as hogs and stays, it's not gonna do any good to put road base on that road unless we get a good list, so we'd have to look at the cost of a water truck also. So I guess when I brought that up to put it on the agenda, basically, I'm just asking the council if they're in agreement with getting that street fixed and letting some cost on it. We're not gonna make any decisions on it tonight.
Oh, yeah, I'm all for that.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, those are basically the two worst parts of town we got is right here in First Street.
No, and Poly.
Poly's pretty bad.
Poly is horrible, it's all run it up.
Which one is Poly?
Yeah, past Sherry's and Poly's place. Just ran it up.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, it's not, you're gonna start doing that, you're gonna fuck twice enough.
You know, biggest problem right now is, you know, I think it better if we were twelve percent to your... Well, even better, that can just be trauma or something, so because my road base was put in two years ago, which wound up being fancy dirt and rocks, it just made a huge mess.
We've got road base right up here by Vigil, so what's the company that's got it, Rod?
Hall Contact Mountain Construction. They've already offered to sell us sand if we need it at a pretty good price. They're out of level pow. I've got a pretty good rapport with them, so if I could get them to give us a good price on about a hundred yards.
And like, even just rent it for a decade.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know what it is right now.
So I can get a price on gravel, if somebody can get a price on a road patrol.
I can get that at Cat Rental. Do we want... Do we have anybody in here that can run a road patrol? Bartley? I know you can. But I know you also got a business in the busy, so...
I can...
Basically, we just have one street there that's not how long it is, and then just this little part out here in front of Down Hall. So, yeah, I'll get that price on that, and when we'd be willing to pay it, too, so...
You might wanna track Tool Time and Burt, get any rental equipment out as well? I don't know if they have that particular one.
Who is it?
Tool Time?
Tool Time.
Or Tool Man, I'm sorry. Tool Man.
Are you serious?
It's Robin Allen.
No, it is an Allen.
What?
It is an Allen.
He said it isn't.
Robin Allen.
But it's her husband. She has wrote in T-shirts, he has Tool Man rental.
What's the name of the guy?
Tim Allen.
Tim who?
Allen. It's not a joke, and that's really his name, which is why he went by Tool Man.
And he rents equipment?
He does. I don't know if he has that. He has skid steers and big baby things. I don't know what those are.
That's technical term.
What's that?
That's technical term.
Yeah, big baby things.
So let's get these prices for the special meeting, and have on the special meeting, and go ahead and decide at that point.
Number's three, three, one, five, two, four, five. Three, three, one, five, two, four, five.
Five, four, five, two.
Stop messing with me. Three, three, one, five, two, four, five.
So are we gonna put this off on the special meeting?
Yeah, because we don't have any price or anything. I mean, everything's gonna be determined on what it costs.
Okay, let's move along then. Let's get ready to put up this small shop. And there's storage. Do I have the motion to approve the building permit for Jerry Cook?
So should.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sherry, yes. Livestock out. What do you have for us?
I got three lambs, two is gonna get butchered, and I'm gonna keep one. It is big right now.
Okay. Well, you know, because our... This would be up to council, but our guest persons didn't do what they were supposed to do. It's a mess. We said at that time that we would not allow any more animals in, but except for chickens. So we're gonna bring it up, and the council's going to discuss it. I stopped by her house, and I looked at it, and she offered to let me go on her property, and look at what she had. It's very clean, it is very neat.
No gate.
And the biggest thing is, is she'll let us go on her property anytime to inspect it. And if the inspection doesn't pass, she will correct it, right?
Yes.
And keep it crafted.
Yes.
Not yet. We're discussing it.
Not yet.
No practice, we're having a discussion here, so when we get through, if it applies, we'll let's talk. So what does the council think?
Well, I think that if the council does it, there's gonna be a description, everything put together, it's gonna be signed by the council, or it's gonna be signed by Sherry.
No practice.
Yeah, you know, because we don't wanna have the issues that we had in the past, or I don't anyway, I don't wanna deal with them.
I'll sign you.
So, you know, in my opinion, is I'd want everything spelled out in it, and, you know, that way, everybody, both of us know, or all of us know what is required, yeah.
Okay, when will these other two be butchered?
As soon as they get old enough, another four months.
Then are you gonna replace them with two more?
No, maybe one more. That way, Spot, the one I got, will have a playmate, so he's not by himself. They're better with two together than one by themselves, so they're not so lonely.
So are these female or male?
I got three males.
Okay.
I can't have no babies.
Pardon?
I can't have no babies from...
Right. But is it better to get weathered sheep, like we was talking, in goats? Are they calmer than...
I don't like goats.
Well, no, I'm not saying that, but in goats, you can have where they're called weathers, they were explained to them here before, and they're calmer... How did you live with that, Lillian Jack told me? They can't have babies, and they're calmer than like a female goat that's gonna bawl all the time, looking for a mate or whatever, they do through that, and now the males, I don't know, I haven't reached...
I have no idea.
So far, but I know there's weathered sheep too, but I don't know if it's different.
So far, have they been quiet? I already cleaned their pen out already. I check them about five times a day, make sure they got food and water and all that, and there's no gate. They can't get in and out, because I don't have a gate. I go through my back door.
Now, my question is, is are they going to be like the goats? I can hear them at night.
No.
Clear down my house wall.
No.
Yeah.
I won't, because as long as there are one with them, they're all right, but if there's only one by itself, it will. So I gotta have two for me to play with.
Sorry, what's that guy?
To play with.
Yeah.
Because they get lonely, one gets lonely, so I'm gonna have two. So I'm getting two butchered, and finding another small one, that way Spot, the one I have alike, will have playmate, so he's don't get lonely. That's the only time he'll make noise, if he's alone by himself.
Could we do it this way? She's got three now, she's gonna butcher two in four months or whatever, and if she gets one more, that's a limit. No more after that.
Yeah, no more, all I want is two.
Okay, and no more after that, and if there's a problem with it, that we have the, you know, if there's complaints or anything, that we would have the right to, you know, do something about that.
Well, and I talked to her about this before, and, you know, if we get complaints from neighbors and things like that.
Yeah, she's okay with it.
Then I've gotta do something.
So you would keep responsible if they get out, or any damage they do?
I check them all the time.
You'll keep them fenced down, and the doggies fenced out?
Yes.
Okay. I personally...
Wouldn't it go along the same as any of the ordinances in there on livestock, basically?
Yeah, yeah.
But the conditions that she gets no one to do.
Right.
I mean, can we do that?
We set it up where we have the right to limit the number of animals.
Yeah, I'll have one is two. After needs two butchered, I won't get any more till he's two butchered.
Now, she also charged, you then like, we're supposed to give us chickens, and it's twenty-five dollars, right?
Right.
So I got my lien card.
Can you just put it in the drop box?
Yeah. I'll be here for a little bit to do paychecks tomorrow, but I don't have the time yet, so if I'm not here, just put it in my drop box.
So I have no problem with it, but we're going to write up the contract with you, and you'll have to sign it, and we'll keep it on hand, and it's not just up to me, it's up to the rest of them. Do I have a motion to allow this or disallow?
Go ahead and make the motion to allow her to have a three sheet at this point, with the exception that the contract will be written and signed by Sherry.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, please, do us a favor, because if this one fails, the last one fails, if this one does, animals are not in town.
No, I'll be good, I'll make sure it's clean, they don't get out, so... I'm a clean person.
Okay, I know you are, up in your house. Sharon Sanford.
For the record, I'd like to introduce myself. I am Sharon Sanford. I live in the campground house. I did not buy bar, quietly bar and cafe, nor the campground, so that has nothing to do with me, other than up until May or March, I did work over there twenty-four seven to help him keep it open and stuff, and so I have one question for councilman or woman jury.
Now, hang on. You're here to speak, you can ask her, but I can tell you right now, until the question is studied, we will get back, so you can go ahead and ask the question, but I won't guarantee you're going to get an answer.
So Judy, is it true that you can shut the business down just because I talk to people in that cafe and bar?
Okay, you don't have to...
I'm not even gonna answer it.
Okay, go on.
Because that is very frustrating to get told that several times, and it's just, it's getting old to me.
That's a personal problem, it's not a council problem, we can't deal with it, and I'm not even going to try to deal with it.
I see that. So am I done?
You're done.
No, we... Sharon's got the floor.
I know, but I was gonna...
Yeah, you can leave, you're done. Okay, go ahead, Sharon.
Then my other thing was, it's very... It was very nice tonight to hear that you wanted to involve the public for the park and stuff, and that it would be nice, yes, to have the date, so that everybody would be aware of that, so, because you can't help, if you're not aware of that, you only get told after the fact that the... so that everybody would be aware of that, so, because you can't help, if you're not aware of that, you only get told after the fact that it was done.
Most of our community projects that we've done, it was advertised in advance. I mean, we've done a lot over the years, and they're always, always, the public's always, always known.
That's true.
So is there something that we didn't, that you know of, or are you just speaking of hearsay?
No, I mean, this whole drama thing that's been going around and around and around on social media is really getting old for everybody.
Believe me, it's getting old, it's getting something really bad.
And if you like social media, it's not this council that's responding. There's a few people in town responding, there's a lot of people from out of town that has no business responding to what goes on in our town.
Well, I didn't have a council person respond to something that I asked the council person. And then the whole thing, everything got all blown up out of proportion, and then it got to the point of if I even spoke to anybody, I get told, don't, Judy off, or she can close it down. That's my son's business, not mine. I should be allowed to talk to people that, anybody that I want, without that threat from people telling me that.
So just, just one, one quick, simple question. Who told you that?
She didn't answer that.
Oh, she don't. But, but here we, here we.
Two people are very aware of who told me that, and that's how I'm going.
Here we go, what the hearsay again, uh, we're not going to have hearsay at meetings.
It was not hearsay, thank you.
Well, I'm going to know who it is was hearsay. Uh, we're not going to sit here and argue. If you have anything else, please bring it up, otherwise we're going to do it wrong.
I was not trying to argue with you, I just wanted to clear that up. And to say that it would be very nice if the whole towns could come together and stop being divided.
I agree with that.
Because it was not divided, I did not divide the town, it was divided a long time before I ever got here. So it would be very, very nice if everybody would come together.
I agree with you 100%.
Thank you.
Any, anything we can do to, to bring it together, let's get it done.
Good, because then that way, people can have the freedom to speak and not be afraid, or even put up posters and not be afraid of that it's going to cause drama. That should not happen.
I agree too. Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Farley.
Is your. I just need a permit for the Fourth of July.
I'll make the motion, go ahead and give, what is it for that night?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion, go ahead and accept the fireworks for the Fourth of July.
I'll say, as long as it's not dry, with the tri- we will not.
Oh, and Brad, you were saying something about if you catch something, if you catch something on fire, we've got to have some assignment, we can give you the permit, but we're not responsible for.
Yeah, if it's dry, I won't.
Yeah.
There you go. She's a bar girl, right? You have to tell me to do this, it does.
Yeah, and that'll be there if, if it's not. So yeah, we can give you the permit, we would just ask that you write something out that the town is not responsible for any, anything that goes wrong.
We'll write that out, Robyn, every time.
We can do that. And then, uh, also a 24-hour permit for alcohol sales.
Okay.
Do they have three of them here, right?
I'll revise my motion to fireworks on the Fourth and the 24-hour permit for beverages.
I'll just. Go ahead of, or everybody?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Travis.
I was, uh, I had a question regarding the animal situation. I'm leaning for a little bit with the regulations and stuff, and I do get what you guys are about, and I truly do. But the thing about it is, is what's good for one person ain't good for another person, things like that, and I'm just curious as if you have a plan on how to isolate all that. So I mean, if I want that, I'm going to go get that rather. I mean, it's going to be on my land, that's that. If that's what the regulations say, that's fine. If it's not, then we'll have a conversation about it.
We regulate the animals that come into town, we have, we will, and right now, on the, the one that everybody's disappointed with, or I shouldn't say everybody, but I've, I've been talking to many towns, many mayors, many clerks, uh, we're going to get away, that we're going to enforce the ordinance, and we're going to remove any animals that uh, the people haven't followed the rules. And I'm looking into it, I've talked to a lot of people about it, and we're, we're getting closer, and we're going to do it. We've got these ordinance and to enforce, and we're going to enforce it.
While we're on the subject, may I ask about barking dogs? Are we going to start enforcing that? Goes along with the animals.
I guess if people have a complaint against barking dogs, they need to start hearing the office.
Sign a complaint.
Fill out a complaint, sign it, and then we'll go from there. Travis, was that it?
So I got three for today.
Okay.
For our discussion.
No, no mayor comments? No other comments? Hang on. It's Chris.
It might be a student question, but does anybody, does everybody have a, the Fourth of July, does everybody have to have permission, or is it just?
No.
Guys, I just wanted to make sure.
In fact, I think our ordinance reads that you can do it for the day, the day before, or the day and the day after.
I just wanted to make sure.
The next one was you?
Yeah, I just have a question. Now that the town has a clerk, are we going to get a copy of the visas and the minutes at every meeting?
A copy of the what?
The visas and the bills and the minutes from the previous meeting like we had to do before?
Uh, we're getting there like before, it takes time, we'll get there, and it will be there. You know, when, when, we'll, we'll get there.
Okay, I was just asking.
Okay.
Your next, you do.
No.
Oh.
You, yeah.
Uh, mine is for Ken and Judy about what we talked about today, about this car wreck.
Right, oh, thank you for bringing that up. Ken would like, uh, we might have to get a backhoe on, on Ken's land there. And basically, Ken requests what everybody would request, that we sign a waiver that states that we are responsible to put that back to the order that it was before we got in there. And that's only fair, I mean, everybody, you know, yes, I think that's, we just need to have the, we don't have to, I don't think, make the motion or.
No, and I did that, I grew it in about 10 years ago. We had to tear apart the sidewalk out, and we had to go on back in it with somebody else's property. But we had to go back in, we had to let it out, we had to make it like it was before, we had to put the fence back up. Uh, it will be back to original shape.
Yeah, me and Ken, we talked about this.
And then you discussed about your fence, didn't you? You were going to do it a little different?
I've already started moving it back.
Okay.
I think I moved it back 20 foot.
Okay, so you discussed that too.
So I'm just going to move my fence over, that way it's, I don't know how much it'll take to get it done. I'm actually getting folks for getting my fence fixed, so, you know, that's going to happen after a year or two.
We're pretty much waiting right now on insurance, because, you know, until we see what the insurance is going to pay on that, it's going to be real hard to figure a time out. So we're kind of bound by the insurance company at this point, see what they're going to do.
And the insurance goes right away for quotes, isn't it, so?
What's that?
Insurance comes right away for quotes.
Yeah, and we're getting those quotes as we speak, so, uh, we should have those very shortly. There's a lot of quotes on that one again, I mean, we got to get quotes on, uh, cutting that sidewalk out, and, and we got to get quotes on the cement, to put it back in, the cement to go in the hole, and there's, there's a lot more involved there than, uh, the average mind thinks there is, uh, it's, it's not going to be a cheap fix.
Well, it's like that gentleman, what happened at the park, what happened there, he just bumped.
Absolutely. Yeah, this guy, he hit that thump.
But I'm just going to move my fence over, so have it on tape, and then when you're all down and through, I'll just get my fence put back up.
So, yeah, we'll get in there and take pictures before we start, and appreciate it if you take pictures too, so we can compare, and we're, we're all on the same page when we're done. Thank you, Ken.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Uh, who was next? Ben.
I just, I forgot to put it in my report, uh, because, you know, there's just a lot of people coming and going now. Is it possible, and court's starting to pick up, is it possible to have, um, town hall cleaned and especially the bathroom cleaned the day before we have court? For the next several months?
It should be. It's not been?
No.
Okay.
More paper products would be nice.
More paper products, and I don't know if the paper towel dispenser got put back, but it's really hygienic having the paper towels that you dry your hands with on the back of the toilet, that.
Yeah.
There's no quite in them.
No. Michelle puts that in here, those two good paper towels. Michelle's got a D O for all that stuff started already, yeah, it's on the.
Yeah, just the, the cleaning, the actual cleaning.
We can do that. I know somebody that can, and don't get that.
Fuckin' Judy.
Anyone else? Any more comments?
Well, I have one question, or one statement.
Wait, please, I pointed.
That's fine, I forgot.
This is actually for the police department. I know that, um, as traffic starts picking up, that we're probably going to get a lot more speech rep, uh, comments, but I want to let you and the police department, Newman, and Colman know that we do appreciate you, and loads of people appreciate our police department. Those who live here in town really appreciate you guys, and I know you're not on social media, but do know that there's a ton of support for you guys, even if you have to go against certain people in town. The community definitely supports and appreciates you guys.
Your turn now.
Um, remember spring, a couple, what, three, four days ago, Alita stopped us and said that the garbage cans were full, but there's no bags. And she said if you guys put bags in them, she will clean and take the bags and throw them away, down at the boat dock.
Yeah, she cornered me on that yesterday, so we were aware of all that, and she don't need to do it, we got maintenance men to do it, so.
Well, she was just offering.
Absolutely, understand it. Ben, take care.
Any other comments? Council comments?
I've got none.
Okay, I was just looking at this, how are we on our dog, uh, dog tags? Are we all caught up on everybody came to dog tags?
Sure. Because I don't know everybody in town.
Well, there should be a list.
It's just the people who's paid though, not people who hasn't paid. It's just the people who've paid, so I don't know if there's people missing off that list or not, because I don't know who has and who don't. But I have that list, maybe you could look over it with me, or I can.
Okay, do I have the motion to adjourn?
So need.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, next regular meeting is July 11th, 2024. There will be a special budget session, uh, it will be posted five days before the out meeting. If we can, we're only eight hours posted, we'll try and get it done.